Gentlemen, you ready down there? Ready down there? The awkward pause.
Yeah.
As you wait for time to move.
It took us too long.
Do the yard.
Here's a soap opera about time. Do the yard.
They must know something we don't know because they're closing the doors. The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the City Council of Dennison, Texas is now in session. Our invocation this evening will be led by Larry Goodwin, pastor of the refuge. Will you please stand?
Thank you, Mayor God. Would you bow your heads and pray with me? Father, we thank you. We thank you for this evening. We thank you for the privilege to gather. We thank you for the ability to be able to come and discuss, debate, and direct the affairs of our community in a forum like this. And Father, I pray blessing over our leaders, our city leaders, those that are directing us, those that are making decisions on our behalf. I pray your blessing and I pray your favor upon them, their families. I speak life and grace, health and strength to them. And Father, we just thank you that you're... We are in your care and you are caring for us and you are governing our affairs and leading us in the way of life everlasting. I pray that we would remember tonight, that we would act justly, that we would love mercy, that we would walk humbly before you, and that we would do what benefits the welfare of every person in our community. And we thank you for the blessing of living in this place called Dennison, Texas. And we give you praise for all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. It is our honor this evening to have with us the members of the Dennison High School varsity baseball players. So if Trey Sharp, Preston Paulson, Dawson Stegman, and Zaden Johnson will come down, they'll lead us in our pledge this evening. Anytime you're ready, gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state, one unity.
Thank you, gentlemen. November 6th through 10th is always set aside as Municipal Court Week. And it's... That time is set aside so that we may honor those who work in the municipal court system. You know, it's a point of pride for this city, for the staff and the court judges. The court system that has evolved over the last few years and has become very, very important to this community. So I think it is appropriate tonight, if Judge Bannman and the court staff, some of them, will meet me at the podium, we have a proclamation to present. I guess I'll stand up here so maybe my voice will carry on that microphone, you think? Hey, Bobby, we have a new microphone. Hey, how about that? Okay. Whereas the City of Dennison has hosted the Dennison Municipal Court since April the 26th, 1920. And whereas the Dennison Municipal Court is a state court and its judges are members of the state judiciary. While Dennison Municipal Judges are not policymakers for the City of Dennison, they are bound by the law and the canons of the judicial conduct and are required to make decisions independently of the governing body of the city council, city officials, and employees. And whereas municipal court plays a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas, as a matter of fact, more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined. And public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. And whereas the Dennison Municipal Court is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that a fair, independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. And whereas the judges, prosecutor, clerks, and city marshals work diligently to uphold the principles of fairness, accountability, and public trust in their daily responsibilities. And whereas the city council recognizes that the Constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards in criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Dennison Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now therefore I, Janet Godd, Mayor of the City of Dennison, on behalf of the entire city council, extend appreciation to our Dennison Municipal Judges, prosecutors, city marshals, and court personnel for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to our community by proclaiming the week of November 6th through 10th, 2023, to be Municipal Court Week. Signed, Janet Godd, Mayor, City of Dennison. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you for all of you. You want a... You want a picture now? Okay. How about I get right? One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you very much. In every meeting, we set aside times for public comments where any citizen may speak to the council regarding any action item that is listed on the agenda. In order to speak, you must fill out a request to speak card before we reach this point in our meeting. Tonight, we have one request to speak card, Carly Nash. She wishes to speak on item 5A, which is the public hearing. Ms. Nash, do you want to speak now or do you want to wait until we actually address the agenda item?
I can wait till you address the item.
I'm sorry?
I can wait till you address the item.
Okay. That... That's the only card, so therefore there will be no public comments. Item four, consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items A through M.
Second. There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Courtright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5A. Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance for a conditional use permit, CUP, for property legally described as being all of Lot 1 and 2, Block 7 of Stevens Edition, an addition to the City of Dennison, according to the platte, recorded in volume 28, page 362, deed records of Grayson County, Texas, also known as 604 West Morton Street, GCAD property ID number 142139, to allow for a restaurant and drive-through in the Neighborhood Services zoning district, case number 2023-091CUP. Ms. York?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I bring forth a request for a conditional use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through for property that's located at 604 West Morton, but is currently zoned Neighborhood Services. This property is located at the corner of Morton and North Myrick Avenue and is predominantly surrounded by the multifamily one zoning district with a few local retail zoning districts across the street and kind of southeast. The property currently has a building that's about 522 square feet located on the property. That building has been there for quite a while. And the applicant has been trying to find a way to redevelop this property and landed on a restaurant with a drive-through and is meeting a lot of our development standards for a restaurant with a drive-through. The site plan depicts about five parking spaces. However, those are going to be for the employees only. Given the size of the building, an actual sit-down restaurant was not... Would not work, and so they are proposing drive-through only. They have provided a stacking lane of about eight cars along with a... An emergency escape lane. They are also proposing kind of in between the drive entries and exits, a landscaped area. However, there are no proposed facade changes to the existing building or other landscape updates. The applicant is proposing the hours of operation to be between 7:00 AM and 10:30 AM for the workers to come in and prepare the food and then for hours of operations for customers to walk in or to drive through, excuse me, and eat to be between the hours of 10:30 AM and 7:30 PM. Given the residential zoning that's adjacent to the property, when developed, the applicant will have to meet all of the screening requirements for a commercially zoned area that's adjacent to residential zoning. So that means on the west side and on the south side, there will be screening that is in accordance with our screening requirements in the zoning code. And given that this is a less intensive use, Neighborhood Services is intended to kind of separate residential zoning districts from more intense commercial uses. And given that this is a less intense use, there's not a lot of parking. It's not a large building. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit. And so did the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on October 24th, 2023. And I'm present for any questions that you may have, and so is the applicant.
So Diane, the CUP goes to the business. It does not... It does not carry beyond this business, correct?
Yep. Yes, ma'am. So the only way that the conditional use permit would lapse is if the use changes. Is that correct, Julie?
Okay. That was... That was my understanding. I just wanted to be sure of that. So... Questions from council for Ms. York?
Does that lot accommodate any customers that would like to park and maybe pick up their order? Or is it strictly drive-through?
It will be strictly drive-through. The applicant, I don't... I'm not sure that in his project narrative or in conversations with staff, presented the option for individuals to walk up and pick up their food. But based off of the site plan or the concept plan, if that wasn't something that was available, parking would not be allowed onsite. It would be street parking.
Any other questions for Ms. York? This is a public hearing. And Carly Nash has requested to speak on this agenda item. Ms. Nash, would you come forward and state your name and address for the record, please, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Carly Nash and my address is 601 West Morton Street, Dennison, Texas. And I've been trying to think all day of what to say before you. That's not in a way of just like a personal problem. But that's what this is for me and my neighbors, is a personal problem. And I became a Dennison resident at the end of July. It's November 6th, so I've not been here long. But during the time, it has been a very refreshing change. And I have two daughters that are in the Dennison School District and I'm closer to my place of employment. Me and my spouse have loved being in Dennison for the time that we've been here. But if this restaurant is located directly across the street from our home, we will be forced to sell at a decreased price, which I'm sure many of my neighbors will also. And it will be increased traffic resulting in increased debris, car accidents, crime, and pests. As you know, you can't back out on Morton Street very well without getting hit on either side. And so you already have to use the alleyways. And Ms. York mentioned that there will not be very much parking. And I do encourage all to drive the block before making this decision. See how big this lot is that she's asking to be approved. And because there are family homes on each sides of this lot and across the street, all on the... Sorry, I'm nervous. On every... On each block, front, back, right, and left. And so before just proving this idea into reality, I invite you to see, like she said, it'll be five parking spaces that could fit in the parking lot that they're designating, which would mean the rest of the parking wouldn't be able to happen on Morton. It would need to be on the side of my house, on Myrick. It's... As she showed in that picture, I'm right there on the corner, on the very next side. So my eight-year-old's window is right there. We already have a lot of traffic from homeless people being on the same street as the shelter. So if people are parking and going to picking up food that they've ordered, and the increased debris that I'll have to pick up while mowing and things like that. Or when my children are playing outside, I just really encourage you to consider my income and the income of my neighbors over a... The income that a new restaurant would bring. One that's actually going to be very small to the community as opposed to all the other restaurants that we have already on Morton Street with it being an exit off the highway where most of our restaurants are located. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council.
I guess my first reaction to this when I saw it was it... It does seem a little out of place for me. I'd like to hear what y'all's opinion is. Because it is kind of right in the middle of a bunch of residential and then all of a sudden you have this random drive-through. I don't know how that, from a visual aspect, how that kind of looks when you have just things like that, but I'd love to hear from you, Ms. York.
So the zoning is entitled. So that Neighborhood Services zoning district has been there for a long time. This was a previous restaurant at some point. The applicant may be able to speak more to the history or if you've been here, you may remember when it was a restaurant. But that zoning entitlement does allow for some type of commercial to go there. And there are other uses that are commercially oriented that are allowed by right. However, he... This is because there was a historic restaurant there. The applicant wanted to carry on that tradition and provide another restaurant at that location.
Is there?
I was going to ask, what kind of restaurant is it?
Yeah.
It's southern cuisine, correct, Mr. White?
You're the applicant, sir?
Yes, I am.
Do you mind coming to the podium so that we can ask you some questions? Would you state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
James White, 4210 West Crawford Street, Dennison. I'll be... I'll be happy to address anything. I'm ready to share with you the tradition, the southern cuisine that we planned for that. A quality drive-through restaurant, something that is difficult to find sometimes in our hometown. This is my hometown. I would never in any way, form, or fashion be condescending, negative, in any kind of way toward any neighbors. Not only that, I have a reputation of being clean. I've made another development in a city not too far from here that impacted the city with respect to cleanliness and beauty coming into it. I'm going to stress this again, I would never put in any business that would not support what we stand for here in Dennison. A clean hometown, one that we welcome everybody and also give everybody an opportunity to help. Everybody can't afford to go out west where it's over by a square inch. I happen to own this property for a number of years. It's been only used as an office for the most part, a meeting place to do real estate deals. But also, I'm allowed to sell items there. I have chosen not to have the volume sales that could be created with the existing parking. But I heard a few comments, some of which were... Was tonight, and I heard some in the previous meeting. Most of it had to be fabricated because they absolutely don't know me. And in addition to that, with respect to having a clean place and not having rodents around, most of us know that when we put in a trash container, most rodents can't get up in the containers that we have today, especially with the tops on. We also know that, in my case, I think everyone would know that I would keep my corner as clean as it could be kept. And so far as trash or anything like that being dispersed in the community, this is a drive-through restaurant. The individuals welcome there will be driving through, not standing outside at the window. That would be dangerous. It is strictly a drive-through restaurant. And I'd be happy to address anything else that you would like for me to address.
So, got it.
Go ahead.
Are there no accommodations for a walk-up?
No. It would be... In my opinion, it would be dangerous. We're not allowed to use the existing parking. We will create five more parking spaces. But all those parking spaces will be on that property. It's not on the street. We wouldn't even allow on-street parking. I wouldn't qualify to even have the business, I don't think. I don't believe that that would be approved. Everything is going to be within those two lots. I'm planning to put up a six-foot fence along the west boundary and the southern boundary of the property. North level, I've heard that mentioned, not tonight, but I've heard it mentioned. I can't... I couldn't even envision, for example, someone saying music being allowed on my property. It just... It was unacceptable. You come in to get food, not to entertain individuals. And I won't go into some of the other... Some insults that I had from a previous individual. I'm not going there. I'm above all of that. What I want to do is provide a quality drive-through restaurant that serves a southern cuisine, kind of like grandma's cooking, Papa's too sometimes. But again, please ask me any questions. I'm ready to answer them.
How many employees do you plan to have?
Three full-time employees.
Three full-time?
Possibly a fourth, but three full-time employees.
And you have four parking spaces, correct?
We will have five parking places.
Five parking spaces, okay.
Do you have any experience running a restaurant?
Very little. Probably about 30... About 30 to 45 days. I tried this at one time. But I'm not going to be the one who's managing this. It's going to be someone who is a quality cook and enjoys that. And as a matter of fact, a person that has had a residence here that's planning retirement and wanting to come in and do kind of a dream thing, along with some family members as well.
My question's related to the sidewalks. You're going to add the drive-through... If we can click back one. Perfect. If you could maybe extend that sidewalk down Myrick Avenue? Just because anytime we can have the opportunity to connect the whole city, I think that's really important that we take advantage of that. So I wanted to see if you were open to that and if you were open to adding a little bit more landscaping, maybe around the building itself?
Well, it's not all in that design. There is actually, with the original building, there is a, we'll call it a planter. I'm not taking away from the history of the building. I've seen it all of my life, as a matter of fact. I think my dad used to go there and pick up things for me when I was a little boy. But with respect to that, I am absolutely open to landscaping because we plan to do it. It's just not all shown in the document.
Okay. Perfect.
And so far as the sidewalk, I have no issues. I'll have a guy out there that's very experienced in laying concrete. He'll be happy to make the extra money.
That would be perfect. I think it's just important anytime we can get that connectivity to try and bring the community together a little bit.
I think once it goes in, people will understand that entering Myrick Avenue and exiting on Myrick is probably a really good thing. I know that Diane had mentioned to me early on when another individual was claiming this, that trying to keep all of the entrances and exits in real the building would be the only way that the city would support it. And I understand, it's just there is a lot of traffic. But a lot of that same traffic will be dropping by, not necessarily being created.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
I appreciate the time. Talk to council.
Ms. Nash, you had something you wanted to say. If you'll come back to the podium, please, so we can all hear you.
Thank you. I'm not denying the quality of whatever restaurant is meant to be brought to Dennison. And I'm opposing the location. Like he said, Morton Street is very busy, so we'd have to use Myrick. My house is on the corner of Myrick and Morton. And so all of the traffic will be right there by my house. How would he enforce the additional traffic if the drive-through is full? If the location is so small that you can only have five parking spots, four of them used by employees, one additional, maybe waiting for a order or whatever? Do you have two that fit in this drive-through? Three, maybe? So you're looking at four customers. How fast do you get the food out? It's a... He said he has 35 days in the business. So I assume it's going to take quite a while for these orders to come out. It's not a McDonald's, Jack and the Lox, things like that. So if you think of these things, you're going to have this drive-through full. People waiting, they can't get in, they're turning, they get into a little wreck right here. You know, just think of all these possibilities, please, before you... Before you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. York, can you go back to that photo? So it can fit eight cars in the drive-through? From the look... Because that drive-through curves around, so I see six, seven, eight.
Yes, sir.
Total, two.
With an escape lane in case there's a...
In there, in case someone's waiting or something.
Correct.
In my opinion, it makes the neighborhood stronger. I think this is a... An historic building that's been there a lot longer than I've ever been alive. And it kind of tells the story of the community in that part, right? So being able to use it as it was, but adapt it to more modern needs with the drive-through and that kind of thing. I think it... It really meets a lot of what we're trying to do by growing our neighborhoods, by building that quality neighborhood where you can get all of these services. I was thinking about the Right Spot that's just two blocks down. Have we had any complaints, any parking issues, any that you know of?
It's hard to compare because that is a sit-down restaurant. They do have a very big parking lot. I... I personally haven't received any complaints, but it's quite a bit different than what this one is.
I just didn't think we had had any... Any increase in accidents or anything. No, no increase in accidents or anything there. It's a similar concept still. It's a smaller restaurant style. And I think it did add a lot to that neighborhood right there.
Yeah, the Right Spot, it enhanced the look. I think, you know, the building that was sitting there abandoned for all those years. You know, what they've done over there, it looks better. I know the... Across the street here on Myrick, my barber shop, growing up, and there were cars that would be in the parking lot. Cars lined up against the street. And during that time, you know, hey, this is where we went to go get our haircut. And it didn't seem like it was... I know it's a little bit different than the drive-through, but we probably were staying there a lot longer. I don't know.
Any other discussion from council? Any other discussion from council? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the conditional use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through for property located at six oh four West Morton Street, with the addition of sidewalk down the Myrick Avenue side and the additional landscaping as discussed by Mr. White. Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hander and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item six A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on entering into a construction manager at risk contract with Archer Western Construction Corporation, including pre-construction services in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Northwest Denison Development Water and Wastewater Improvement Project, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same. Ms. Sterns.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for considering this item tonight. This item is for the Construction Manager at Risk, or CMAR, contract for the Northwest Denison Development Water and Wastewater Improvements Project. We've talked about this a few times so far. So this is the map to remind you of what we're talking about. So the different project elements are included in this. There are some elements that are currently under construction right now in this map also. The city issued a request for proposals for the project CMAR in September this year, and we opened those in October. Staff and the engineer recommend award of the CMAR contract to Archer Western Construction. This contract includes three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for pre-construction services. The pre-construction phase, during that time, the CMAR will work with the city and the project engineer, Plumber and Associates, on design and constructibility review, construction sequencing and scheduling, cost model development, utility location and exploration, equipment pre-purchase, and a number of other things that are generally included in pre-construction services. With the help of the CMAR, plans for each element of the project will be finalized. And with those final plans, Archer Western will be able to develop and present a guaranteed maximum price for construction. We anticipate having that back before you for consideration for this project in early twenty twenty-four. Archer Western is currently the CMAR for the Lake Texoma Raw Water Pump Station Project. They've also helped us with some improvements at their Ryland Water Treatment Plant, the Papa Wastewater Treatment Plant, and they've done great work. They have an excellent reputation, so we're really looking forward to working with them on this project. I'm present for any questions. We also have Alan Tucker, President of Business Development for Plumber and Associates, Jason Davis, Senior Project Manager, and Frank Eater, Project Executive, both from Archer Western, present for questions as well.
Questions for Ms. Sterns? Thank you. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve entering into a construction manager at risk contract with Archer Western Construction Corporation, including pre-construction services in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Northwest Denison Development Water and Wastewater Improvements Project, and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thomas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item six B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on authorizing fiscal year twenty twenty-three year-end budget amendments and appropriations of funds from fiscal year twenty twenty-three to fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Ms. Osseball.
Good evening. I'm, I'm here to bring the fiscal year twenty-three year-end budget amendments and appropriations to you for approval. Last week, we closed out at our final closing of fiscal year twenty-three and finalized all of our numbers. Amendments are required for revenues that come in fifty thousand dollars or more under budget, and for expenses that come in five thousand dollars or more over budget. In addition to amendments, you'll be approving the appropriations, which are items that were budgeted in fiscal year twenty-three but not spent before year end. So these need to be carried over or appropriated to fiscal year twenty-four. You should have a list of all the amendments and appropriations in your council agenda packet. Now to summarize our cash positions, for the general fund, we originally budgeted six point eight, or we estimated ending our cash at six point eight three million. We actually came in at six, or sorry, seven point six seven million. So that was good. We, we came in higher than anticipated. That was due to property tax and sales tax being higher than expected. For fiscal year twenty-four, we are now looking at ending the year with seven point six seven million, which is sixty-one days of reserve. And if you recall, we're required to be within sixty to ninety days. On the utility fund, we originally estimated ending the year with four point one five million, and we came in at four point one one million. So that was slightly below what was anticipated. Although revenues did come in stronger, expenses were also up, so you don't really see that gain. For fiscal year twenty-four, we are looking at ending the year with sixty-five days of reserve, which is four point two four, uh, three million. So staff is requesting approval of the fiscal year twenty-three budget amendments and appropriations, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Osseball? Thank you. Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the FY twenty twenty-three year-end budget amendments and appropriation of funds from FY twenty twenty-three to FY twenty twenty-four.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thomas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Pursuant to chapter five five one Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene in executive sessions from time to time, as deemed necessary during this meeting, to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law, or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct. Conflicts with this chapter and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same, section five five one dot zero seven one. Confer with city attorney regarding City of Denison versus A.B. Sherman Holding Company, LLC, as to the properties located at fifteen twenty-seven South Austin Avenue, cause number C V twenty-three zero five eight three and twenty-eight twenty-four West Crawford, cause number C V twenty-three dash zero five eight two, fifteenth Judicial District, Grayson County, Texas. Confer with city attorney regarding Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight and City of Garland, City of Grand Prairie versus State of Texas, Travis County, Texas. Confer with city attorney regarding provisions of utility service. Deliberations regarding economic development negotiations pursuant to sections five five one dot zero eight seven. Update by Denison Development Alliance on pending negotiations and projects, including but not limited to potential purchase of property by Denison Development Alliance. Discuss information regarding development prospects and tax increment reinvestment zone number two. The time is six thirty-seven, and the council is now in executive session. Confer with city attorney regarding Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight and City of Grand Prairie versus State of Texas, Travis County, Texas. Mayor Pro Tim?
Mayor, I move that the City of Denison join the lawsuit regarding Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight between the City of Grand Prairie and the State of Texas, Travis County, Texas.
Second.
Not to exceed twenty-five thousand.
With the contribution?
With the contribution not to exceed twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Confer with city attorney regarding provision of utility service. No action taken. Update by Denison Development Alliance on pending negotiations and projects, including but not limited to potential purchase of property by Denison Development Alliance. Mayor Pro Tim?
Mayor, I move to approve a budget amendment requested by the Denison Development Alliance Board in the amount of five hundred two thousand. Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Discuss information regarding development prospects and tax increment reinvestment zone number two. No action taken. The time is seven thirty-three, and with no further business to come before this body, we stand adjourned. Giving it all I've got.